I'd like to call a regular Board of Education meeting to order. Please advise for touch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Your call, Kelly.
Good evening.
The late.
Mr. Casilio.
The late.
Miss Lynn.
Present.
Mr. Rikowski.
Here.
Stabler.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Who's almost the late Brown here.
Mr. Wolf.
Present.
Stewart.
Here.
Here. Our exits, Matt.
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
All right, we have a bunch of workshops tonight, but we're gonna start out with our audit report, so I'm gonna ask Jen and Kristi come on up and give us a brief overview of our audit.
Good evening. Chris and I are here this evening to present your June 30, 2018 audit report. We're pleased to say that we have issued four clean or unmodified opinions. The first one was on the district's financial statement. The second was on the internal controls over financial reporting. The third was the similar audit, and the fourth was the extra classroom activity funds audit. Again, all four were clean or unmodified opinions, and they're all found in this might be something page document that you have here in front of you. Pleased to say the district is in strong financial condition. You have sufficient cash to meet your current obligations. You're also well-reserved. The district is using the reserve funds as well as replenishing those funds with current year excess unappropriated unbalance. This year, we actually added about $500,000 to an insurance reserve that was created for the 1718 full year. And one major change that you'll note from last year's financial to this year's financial was the implementation of GASB-75, which related to the district's other portion of employment benefits. So you'll see that liability on here and the restatement of the net position that's disclosed in here. Are there any questions or anything that anyone would like to add to more detail?
Any questions?
When you say "clean," what does that mean in non-financial persons terms?
It's an unmodified opinion.
It reasonably states the financial position that the district has issued on 30, but we found no issue to modify that opinion, that the district did enough that the financial standards represent what happened.
Okay. No buts, ifs, or whatever.
Sometimes they'll say, except for, or we found this and X, Y, and Z, and no one wants a modified opinion. And you do very well here, so it was very easy to issue clean opinions.
So even though there are some recommendations in the report, but those are some, you know, minor items to tighten up on as we go forward, but nothing significant.
Nothing chronic. If it was chronic, we'd have a different position.
Okay.
And all those adjustments were discussed with management. We've reviewed them, and they've all been reflected in your financial statements. So everything is accurately stated in your financial statements. There's nothing that's been misstated that was uncorrected or left out of these financials.
We also have a corrective action plan issued by the district, right, to how we're gonna address those minor items that you found.
Can you just give a brief overview of how many days you spend in the district going through the financial files and so forth?
Yeah, so we're here, we come, I think we're here in late May this year, and we do our preliminary fieldwork for like a day or two in May, and then we're onsite for about four to five days doing the actual fieldwork, and then back in the office, you know, going back and forth with Sandy and Anne Marie from there. But onsite usually from five to seven days.
And how many people are on site when you do those audits?
We had four of us onsite. Yeah.
I just think it's important, so like I've witnessed it, when you guys come in and you guys take over a whole conference table and files going on.
Yes.
And really what we do is we park seasoned people, you know? We don't just put a junior accountant here. You know, we take a junior accountant, don't get me wrong, but you have strong seasoned people here going through your books and records. And truly, you know, we come, you know, we gotta pitch the business office, it's trying to launch the new year, get all the POs out, all this stuff, and we come in and we're dragging them backwards. So it's a tough time for them, and they always rise to the occasion calmly, professionally, and quietly, and it is truly a pleasure to work with them.
Great. Thank you guys very much. We do appreciate it.
So the extra classroom activity fund sent me quite a separate audit, and that audit was included?
Yes, it's the last few pages of the bound report.
And there were some notes about, I guess, what, there's some backup missing on one. So is there like a cheat sheet for, because what I'm thinking, these funds come from are from the PTOs, PTAs, and they're not. Okay, so where they're coming from? Let me ask you that.
Yeah, it's like, Chris, that's mostly fundraising activities that the students are doing. So it's really the students that are running these clubs and with the teacher advisor assistance, and then according to the central treasurer for the school. It has nothing to do with PTA or PTOs.
So is there like a cheat sheet for, I guess, like steps to follow, collecting funds?
Yeah, they do have, there's actual forms in place that are supposed to be completed, and that's what we're kind of citing. Either the forms were missing, or there might have been a signature missing, because there's supposed to be the student representative's signature, the teacher advisor's signature, and then ultimately the central treasurer's supposed to be signing off. So on those particular ones that we found, we had either the form was missing or wasn't filled out in its entirety. So we just, there are processes in place. It just so happened that we found a couple instances where there was a breakdown. Anne Marie indicated in our audit committee meeting that there was, the principal, right, was not there anymore, so Anne Marie was filling in, so that could have been just some of the transition of why those things happened. But again, it's students dealing with these funds and kind of, you know, handling all that, so sometimes there is, you know, a few, I mean, one or two things that we found out of all the ones we tested was minor.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Now, you four, four extra classrooms, even though we cited a few things, it's run very well. That's good to hear.
And this is, I mean, and I was gonna say, I was actually pretty, thought it was pretty remarkable, the amount of money that students raised.
Yeah.
They're small, but you guys did this.
Yeah, you're very efficient.
All right, well, thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, for receiving that. All right, our second workshop is on board goals. So we had a conversation last board meeting about board goals. We created a shared document. We're looking to kind of finalize the goals, to see where we're at. I know people had an opportunity to wordsmith them and share what they thought. Anybody wanna share thoughts or opinions about goals?
I'm feeling very good about the goals in general. James went through and kind of wordsmithed all of them, some of them a little bit more than others. And I think there are some good changes. I, should we go goal by goal maybe?
Sure.
So the excellence goal, I kind of prefer the original goal to James's wording there. I don't know how everyone else feels about it. I can read, should I read?
Does everyone have the edits that James made and was able to view and stuff? I know.
I can read that.
You're talking about something online and they're looking at it, so.
Why don't I read?
I'd like to hear, I think, public, for the record, sort of video, which should be read.
So the original goal for excellence was the BCSD will foster an affirming and supportive culture where all students maximize their potential and where we as a community of educators take responsibility for the success of every student. James shortened it. Should I read James's edit? The BCSD will ensure an exemplary educational experience for every student that maximizes their potential and academically prepares them for any endeavor beyond graduation. And I think the sentiment behind, you know, of preparing a student for anything that they wanna do, any direction they wanna go after graduation is really important. Exemplary educational experience didn't, was it like a tough few words for me? You know, I just didn't. It's not that I disagree with the sentiment, but I didn't love the wording there. And I like affirming and supportive culture. I think that's, you know, kind of relates to the care goal, and it's not bad to be reaffirming that.
I agree with you, Mary. I like the original one. I prefer the original one.
We could, the only thing is, and it's already, it's kind of a long goal, so I don't necessarily want it to get any longer, but I did like what James added about, you know, preparing them for any endeavor beyond graduation. But I think, does everyone agree that that's kind of implied by, you know, educator, community of educators take responsibility for the success of every student, or?
I'm actually a little confused with the direction you're going. James is that it is shorter, but you wanna make it long, you wanna keep it longer.
I, well, I, yeah, I do in this, I mean, I understand the interest of making it shorter.
We can project the Google Doc.
That might be helpful, yeah.
That's Michael. Hey, Mike, if I share it with you, is that okay? And it probably won't go into my spam. And then I can scroll around.
Perfect, thank you.
Did we already take out that language?
Take out which language? He sort of rewrote them. James, we're discussing your edits. Thank you. And I was just saying, I really, I like, I like some things about the first excellent school, but I liked what you said about, you know, sort of thinking beyond graduation, not just getting them to the, to walking across the stage, but, you know, preparing them for beyond that.
But along with what we're trying to do with the work, you know, the, how our vision of how we want education and the kids to be prepared before they leave, it's right in there.
I think the only thing about exemplary is that it feels very subjective, like that we would need to define it a little bit better. I know, I know it's going towards something, I just, that's it.
Yeah. I mean, it is, it is shorter. I'm missing the words affirming and supportive, however, you know, maybe that's something for the care goal.
If I could just explain my thinking, and obviously, like, that's just what popped in my head in this. The excellent goal to my mind is just very specifically about excellence in our academic offerings. And then I was very much thinking about the idea of fostering, affirming and supportive culture as being sort of what's covered in care.
In the care.
Right? So in terms of excellence, what we're really saying is, our goal is to offer, you know, I said, I chose the word exemplary in my mind, but I was thinking, you know, outstanding, great, you know, the best.
Yeah, I know, it's tricky, because I am not finding a better word. I just, it's something about, I think it's just because we have to imagine this goes out to everybody and that.
Right, that was the one word that I sort of was tripping on, I guess. Can we make it something super simple, like the best possible education? I mean, maybe that's just a little more.
Yeah, I think what I was, I was trying to get towards, and I don't know if I'd love that word either, but, you know, in terms of like, how do we, how do we set our goals for excellence, you know, there can be this idea of assessing where we are now and we wanna improve, so we can always be comparing to ourselves, but it seems in terms of the goal, maybe we could aspire to be leaders of the state, you know, in terms of what we offer, what our, what our students can achieve. In terms of, you know, a long-term goal, that's kind of what I was trying to.
One like, you know, benchmarking, here's what, here's what good looks like here, here's what the best is that's out there, and we're gonna figure out how to take the best pieces and bring them here. How to become that, how to equalize.
Right. I have a comment. So the way, I think we're all talking, I think we all want the same thing, we're just trying to figure out the language that we want in a one-sentence goal. And I guess, you know, what I noticed is that you took out culture, and, you know, like, it had a flavor of diversity, the original goal, and you've kind of made, you've, I guess you've made it more specific. Is that, was that your goal?
That was, my intent was to give each of the goals as much power as they have, you know, so equity, like, all of the equity goals are concentrated in equity. You know, excellence very specifically is about academic excellence. This is what I was thinking, just how I interpret it.
Okay, so now, if you, if you did that, then I'll have, I have a comment on celebrating diversity, 'cause it's not captured really, maybe perhaps in the care, but, you know, taken out of the excellence now has no, it's like an orphan now, I think, celebrating diversity.
So I have two thoughts. One is, I feel like maybe excellence needs to be more from the student perspective unless us sort of top down. Like, I, I mean, it's, I keep, my high school motto was the pursuit of excellence, which, you know, debatable, but the one thing about it is that I think if we put it into the place of being able to meet where the student wants to go, you know, having something where, I'm not, and this is really just reactive now, so I don't have it perfectly wordsmithed, but I feel like if we, whether it's.
You type something, it'll show up on the screen.
No, I know. I'm actually, because I read the audit report, I have like maxed out all of my brain power. I feel like I'm in this very one side of my brain, not the other side of my brain. But do you, does anyone else have this faint idea of what I'm saying?
Well, I think that the, the idea of, you know, endeavor beyond graduation does sort of point to the student in a way that, that the original goal doesn't have, you know, and, but.
I think it's something about the, I think, when I see the first part, and it's not, it's just my thinking, maybe that's not what everyone else is seeing. I feel like, I always think of that as like, kind of like an arms race with Westchester, like the best, you know, like that where, that there seems to be, there is this like finances tied to that, whereas, I feel like, I just went to this conference this weekend, and a lot of the kids just blew me away because they all took, I mean, it really didn't matter where they were coming from, they had kind of like a supportive adult helping them go as far as they wanted to go. And all, then the, then the things, they, you know, helped line things up behind them. And I feel like.
Well, I think that, and that's what I liked about the, just sort of working with what is here, that's sort of what I liked about the fostering and affirming supportive culture, because I feel like that, that's, and I understand James said that you were sort of identifying it more in under the care goal, but excellence goal is our sort of broadest goal, I think, in some ways, and so I do, I miss that. I feel like, I don't know, I'm just missing.
And also, I.
There needs to be a place for making sure we have the academic offerings, you know, to allow, you know, all students to achieve what they need beyond school or what they're interested in. So it's gotta be somewhere as well.
Maybe it's a supportive educational culture.
Sorry, say it again.
A supportive educational culture.
And offering.
As soon as you put that word in there, it sort of changes, it makes it more about academics than about nurturing students.
Support, I mean, when you say supportive educational culture, I think it, I think it does shift though between, if you're, you know, do we do what we need to do to meet standard, or do we do to shoot above that standard? You know what I mean? I think that's, I think that's a struggle between exemplary and just right support.
Yeah, and also I think we need to identify, like, what are we hiding there exactly? Like, are we talking about, like, Mike, are you talking about, like, kind of like a menu of like, like more AP classes, or like, what is the?
Well, might be, might be AP classes, maybe different types of art classes, maybe we want, you know, casting, bronze, you know, welding, whatever, maybe we want, you know, we have strings, maybe we wanna go something else. What are the offerings? We have a good culture, but then if we don't have the offerings that kids really need to help them along the way, they kind of go hand in hand, so.
Right, it's not entirely academic, it's curriculum.
Right, well, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, maybe the term academic offerings is, is important. I mean, there isn't, we don't mention, what was it, the pairs.
Well, academic, academic offerings and then bronze.
I mean, could we talk about the culture and the curriculum sometimes, maybe?
I was gonna say occupation, that's more occupational, so that's another word.
Right, so I was using, you know, offerings, you know, different, it could be many different types of experiences, whether it's, you know.
Maybe we can tweak the language to speak to well, like, well-rounded, right? That's what we're, that's the ultimate goal, is to produce well-rounded students, right?
Yeah.
Well, not exactly. I mean, I, I don't know, I feel that in excellence, you know, if the student, if the students, or, you know, if a student wants to excel in something, it could be trades, activity, engineering, you know, whatever that may be, that we provide the basic building blocks and go above and beyond what was minimally is required in a public school education to, to help them achieve that. So that's what I think we should put right in. It's not, it's not supportive, it's not, you know, it's more than that. It's not academic, it's not, you know, it's more than that.
If I could just give a little example, literally, I had today, I was teaching at SUNY New York, it's a design course, and I have a group of students who are all freshmen, and we go around, we introduce ourselves today, and we're saying, what is your experience with art courses that led you to becoming a design major? Right? One of my students today had this long story about how when he was in high school, as a freshman, he took darkroom photography, and then he took digital photography, and then he thought he wanted to be an architect, so he took an architecture CAD class at his high school. Realized he didn't like it, so then he took graphic design class afterwards, and everyone in the room, they're all public school students, were like looking around, and were like, where did you go to school? Right? I want that to be our schools, right? That when the students list the experiences they had to explore, what they wanted for their future careers, those resources were available to them. I think that's, that's an admirable goal in any field.
Well-stated. What school was that?
Yeah.
I don't remember.
Isn't that part of the help we're getting from the coherence? Is that the right, the coherence plan? You know, what does that look like? What are those skills, that basic things we want our students to have in order to enable them to do, you know, explore, so they know they have basics on the pathway?
So, and I know we have issues with exemplary, but what about something like, the BCSD will provide an exemplary curriculum and supportive culture to ensure all students maximize their potential and are prepared for any endeavor beyond graduation?
I could. Can you type it in?
Yes, I can.
Would people fine with that?
I like that one.
I didn't hear it, but.
I'm gonna type in and you'll see it. I've never typed in an audience.
All right, let's go to equity. So the original was Beacon City School District will provide an equitable education for all students by working to eliminate race, class, gender, ethnicity, and disability as predictors of student success and celebrate diversity.
James.
I just typed it in. I just typed it in.
And he just typed it, and celebrate diversity.
I thought you could tell the history. The last three words I just typed in.
No, yeah, we have a comment down below.
Oh, yeah? I was supposed to be, I'm surprised.
I tweaked it to say gender identity and homosexuality.
I think that's good.
I'm fine with what James added. So if you wanna look at James's now? James, you wanna read it?
Oh.
Is it down below, or is it?
It's down below. You know, maybe I could just, can I just copy and paste and add that to the?
Yeah.
I don't wanna link that, but one of the things that I, there's a, there's some scientists explaining something this weekend, and they were talking about how diverse systems are stronger systems, and so I was thinking, like, we could say that the BCSD recognizes that our diversity is an asset or strength, and as such will provide equitable education for all, kind of what's on the screen.
I love that sentiment.
Can you say it again, Kristi?
But is that a goal, or is that a statement? I mean, we wanna make it a goal, right? So can we word it in a way that says, we will, we will.
Support our diverse culture as we recognize that it is a strength?
Some verb that, that will.
That's good. Well, I, what I said was, BCSD recognizes that diverse systems, diverse, what did I say?
That our diversity is a strength or asset.
Right, that our diversity is an asset, and in support will provide equitable education for all students.
It also makes me wanna make like a catchphrase for each of these goals, you know, like, diversity is our strength. Equity, diversity is our strength. The BCSD will provide, yada, yada. Excellence would be like, students are our future. BCSD will do this, you know? Fiscal, money's important.
I like that. For the T-shirt.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, I'm just trying to end the sentence.
If I could, Anthony, just what you're, Anthony, what you're doing, I might just move the, just aware, I don't know how to forget, I forget my grammar, but the celebration of diversity, where did that go?
I deleted it.
Oh. You don't wanna include it?
Well, I do, but if the second sentence is gonna do the same, is.
I mean, recognizing it as an asset is the same as celebrating it, isn't it?
Well, I don't know, 'cause to be honest, I actually really resonated with the idea of celebrating it, because to me, that connects specifically to our curriculum, you know, like how we, it kind of dovetails to a conversation we had in the diversity committee around expanding something like Black History Month into, rather than just being a month, but it's a whole year, you know, like the Latinx Heritage Month being not something we celebrate just for a month, but it's integrated into the whole curriculum, and that not necessarily be narratives about being marginalized, but actually narratives about celebrating difference and diversity. So that's, that's what kind of came to mind, and we talked about that.
Sure.
There's kind of a specific.
Okay, so I can say, the Beacon City School District recognizes that our diversity is an asset, and Beacon City School District will celebrate it into our culture and curriculum.
Yeah, it just happened.
So you're saying add a different set, another sentence. I was taking what Kristen had, the Beacon City School District recognized that our diversity is an asset, and the Beacon City School District will provide an equitable education for all students by working to eliminate, and go on.
Oh, I thought we were talking about the sentence.
I was starting out with that, but I feel like, I'm just trying to think about wording these things, there's some things that definitely overlap.
It should be.
So it's, I feel like the, I feel like the first part is that we're embracing something sort of by saying, if we started, if we move it up to, the BCSD recognizes that diversity is an asset, and, because I feel like celebrating goes beyond providing, I feel like equitable and celebration are maybe, maybe two different things, but.
I also just feel like it's getting long.
Yeah.
I think we have to choose. I actually, yeah.
Sorry, I just, I need to see it, like, in my. Sorry, I just, I need to see it, like, in my head, written out.
I guess if our goal is to recognize it as a strength and celebrate it, then we don't necessarily have to say that we'll work to identi, you know, eliminate barriers, but rather say, if the goal, if we're talking a goal, so it's like, we're using like the exemplary as our, like, motto in this situation, you know, or as like one of the things, as an example, and, and what James described, that's far from where we are, but if we're saying this is a goal, then maybe we say the BCSD recognizes that our diversity is an asset, and as, um, and will endeavor to celebrate our differences in race, ethnicity, class, gender identity, sexuality, and ability as predictors of student success.
So, so you're saying celebrate those things as?
Rather than working to eliminate barriers.
You made a positive.
Yeah, like, kind of taking, 'cause that feels like, if you're building off of what they're talking about doing for, um, for the diversity committee, that's sort of like putting the, putting the pin on the map where you wanna go, rather than thinking about, like.
Kind of striving to be a model.
Yeah.
In this area.
Like, kind of flipping it around and saying that.
I actually really, I liked the way it had, I liked including the eliminate race and ethnicity as predictors of success.
I think we can't, I think it's getting a little bit, um, I don't know, somehow I feel like it's important to acknowledge, yeah, that there is, I, I love the idea of celebrating, and I think it's really important, what, you know, what you're saying about celebrating a culture rather than just talking about the, you know, the terrible histories that some, you know, some groups have, but at the same time, I think we can't quite not say what has to be done to get there.
But that's, but that's different than a goal. The goal is where you wanna go, and then the work is what you, is the, the actions you put underneath it.
That's true.
But, yeah, I, I, I think we want to eliminate it, and we want to, I think equity is, 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 is never a silver bullet for equity. So, I, I, sometimes I think that it, it doesn't require a simple, um, a simple, uh, sentence for it.
Yeah, I think Alyssa actually did, um, just, oh, who wrote it? Blue, James Blue, um, I think that you just distilled it into a.
I like the wording.
Yeah, it's, 'cause we've gotten back to a digestible sentence, it was getting, it was just getting very long, you know, long. But I think the BCSD will celebrate diversity and provide equitable education for all students by working to eliminate race, ethnicity, class, gender identity, sexuality, and disabilities as predictors of student success, I mean, I, I think.
I really like it. I like that celebrating diversity is in there. I feel, it feels very positive, rather than just trying to get rid of something.
I'm hearing a consensus, the third one? Oh, children, we get the first one? Okay. Fiscal. Beacon City School District will continue to employ a transparent budget process while maximizing district programs and offerings in the near and long term.
To be applying that employee.
To, to employ, oh, I see.
Yeah.
I think we should add something in there, um, transparent budget process, you know, that will help, you know, which enables, you know, our strategic planning process, right? So, it's, so it aligns with our, and, and, and helps our programs and the other goals that we have to become reality.
The previous text, I think, had referenced the building public support, which continues to concern me, and for the future, probably, my concern is even more.
You mean the prior goal? When we talked about the goals we have now?
Last year's goal, I mean, or, or the goal we, what we talked about at the last meeting?
Well, not necessarily the whole thing, but the, the concept of building public support. I would take that out.
Pardon me, thanks, Craig, it's understood when you're, when you're gonna continue to employ a transparent budget, that the public is aware of that piece.
That would fix it.
I'm fine with the edit, Beacon City School District will continue to build public support and employ transparent budget process while maximizing district programs and offerings in the near and long term.
Well, I, I, I feel like the public support, I mean, what Craig was specifically talking about was just public support for the, for the budget, which I don't know is, I mean, I don't know if that works in this sentence that well, I feel like, the way it's written, it doesn't.
Yeah, you don't know what you're building public support for.
I think the transparency of how you're building your budget and the programs and things you're doing, right, that support the other goals, the transparency and communicating is what.
Right, that, that is, is with the hope of, of having public.
Those support from the public to actually agree and say, yes, we are in support of, of the budget.
I think it's the order, the continue to employ a transparent budget process and build public support for maintaining district programs and offerings in the near and long term. Maintaining and improving, uh, might even be better.
That's better, for sure.
Or, structure, I think, needs to be kind of flipped around.
Maybe maximizing district programs and offerings to achieve our, you know, to achieve our goals.
I thought that, uh, and this was in my, my little edit towards the end, the only thing that I thought we could add was, uh, change it to maximizing educational programs and student opportunities. I feel like, since we're spending money on students, we should have them mentioned in there at some point.
I agree, but do we also wanna include, I mean, are we also talking about things like professional development? And, I mean, are we including everything that we're spending money on in that goal?
Yeah, I thought the word offerings is pretty vague, that would include not just the students, but the staff, too.
Yeah, I think it's important.
Yeah, I mean, isn't, okay, yeah, I guess I thought that, I think of staff and professional development being part of the educational program. But maybe that's not.
Like it's understood.
Like it's, I feel like that maybe it's understood, maybe not specific in terms of student opportunities, but educational programs certainly, I think that. Teacher development.
Sure, sure, the correct word is while, uh, with the restructured sentence, that maybe I should say build public support.
In order to maximize.
In order to, yeah, maybe that, to maximize, and, and should be included, the word improve. I would hesitate to include, include the word expand, but improve, I think, is hard to argue with.
Well, I feel like maximizing is a really good word.
That gives you.
I don't like the word improve.
Yeah, I don't think improve is.
Maximizing.
To maximize or to achieve our goals.
I like the word maximizing.
Is there any way to, to work the word education in there at some point? I always think it's nice to, to have anyone is reminded of money that we're spending, it's great to remember what we're spending it on.
So, educational offering, could it be, yeah.
But you might need a new boiler at some point.
I would put.
It helps the educational process.
Yeah, for sure.
It does.
No, not after district, but before offerings.
Educational programs and offerings.
This is really, this is really minor, but why do we have, um, continue to in there? Continue to.
Yeah, that's not really a, not a goal, it's, uh, just, if we took that.
I think we already added transparent, and I think that's why the word continue to was in there.
But I, well, I feel like maybe if it's, we're not putting it elsewhere, we don't need to put it there, right?
Yeah, so it's, of course, it's like.
Anything to make it shorter, yeah.
Yeah, anything. I mean, we, we just did a, you know, an auto presentation, which shows that we're, you know, there's ongoing use to measure.
Alright, so what we have now is the Beacon City School District will employ a transparent budget process and build public support while we were gonna switch.
Yeah, that's gonna, in order to maximize.
And then we're up to maximize district programs and educational offerings in the near and long term future.
Just in the near and long term.
I can do two, near and long term. Add it. We go with fiscal? Communications? James, did you have any edits up? I did, but we don't have to. Um, I wrote, the BCSD will take responsibility for maintaining trust and facilitating an open community through enhanced communication outreach and dialogue between faculty, families, and students. There you go. It's a little more wording.
How do we address, um, our non-English-speaking families?
Is that part of the goal, or is that, like, are we asking a question about?
It's about communication, it's a part of that goal.
I would say when you get into specific subgroup, it's getting to grammular.
I feel like. BCSD will take responsibility for fostering an open community through enhanced education outreach and dialogue between faculty, families, and students. If we took out maintaining trust, well, I guess maintain, or what about take responsibility for?
I do like having trust.
What about facilitating community rather than end of open community, just facilitating community?
I think trust is hard to measure.
You think trust is hard to measure?
How would you measure?
You'd ask.
Yeah, I think it's qualitative. I, I thought about including trust, because, I mean, to be totally frank, I think that we have some fractures in our trust in our district, and we're healing and we're rebuilding that, um, but I think between, uh, between families, faculty, and the board, I think that's something that we're kind of like reassembling, uh, is my sense, just from, honestly, just from talking to lots of people in town.
And that's where I think the subjectivity comes in to play, because I think if you talk to other people, they may feel differently.
Well, you talk to one person, who says they don't trust, for it to say, we could do better.
Well, yeah, but that brings up a good point, so if we, if you, some people feel differently, and, and our goal is to maintain that trust or prove that trust, then, then, then that becomes actionable.
Well, we switch it around a little bit, that actionable will maintain and facilitate an open community through enhanced communication, outreach, dialogue, in order to build, gain, improve trust.
Just say improved trust.
Improved trust.
You can only trust.
Yeah, and possibly.
I kind of was thinking that if we have any ability to recognize that there are some fractures in the trust on any level throughout our district, I think it's nice for the board to take responsibility for that, you know, rather than just letting it be unmentioned. Just kind of take ownership of it a little bit.
Right, I think my issue is maintain trust, the piece of maintain, we don't have a baseline to say where it's at.
So, build trust is worth.
I mean, it's not a Dilbert formula, I'm fine with it, I'm just pointing out, I think it's hard to measure.
What about, what about, um, BCSD will take responsibility to build trust and facilitate community through enhanced communication, outreach, and dialogue between faculty, families, and students? I like that faculty, families, and students are mentioned, I feel like that's, I don't know, that was in the first part. Yeah.
Say that again.
To, um, the BCSD will take responsibility to, to build trust and facilitate community through enhanced communication outreach and dialogue between faculty, families, and students.
So.
There.
Through, or build trust and facilitate, or, or through.
And facilitate community, so facilitate community, I, I don't like open community, I'm not sure exactly what's rubbing me wrong about it, but it, that's really hard to measure, I guess, um, and it, and it's sort of, there's a judgment within that that I know, I know I'm not comfortable with.
I like that.
Yeah, I think community is better than open community, and I like that.
Facilitate community, yeah.
Facilitate community, what?
Through enhanced communication, well, can't we say just communication?
Yeah, exactly, through communication.
It's hard to measure, too.
Outreach and dialogue between faculty, families.
Do I, I thought, and I don't know if I love enhance as a word, but I feel like it, it's sort of set the back benchmark to do better than what we've done. Like, the improvement, improved.
Continuous communication.
Maybe it's fine without, I don't know.
I think we could lose the answer, but.
I just feel like, yeah, I just, it's, I know what you're saying, like, you wanna have, give it somewhere to go, but I don't, I don't think that's a word, but.
What about open there, open communication?
Okay.
That's better, yeah. I like that idea, because I feel like, um, this year, you've seen a lot more openness in the way that we've discussed situations in the district, and I think that that's really helped.
Okay, I think that's good.
I like it. Only question is, do, are we facilitating community? Am I looking at it the wrong way?
Yeah, I think, I, I think communication does, because it's, I mean, communication is about relationship building and about, you know, sort of mutually leaving, and like, the benefit of the doubt, like, the, you know, assuming the best intentions on both sides, and so, I think if we, if we're, if it's, if we continue to reach out, then we're continuing to, like, have, invite people to sort of reach in, to like.
But could it be, like, build trust and community, building both, maybe?
Rather than facilitate?
Yeah.
It's short. I thought that James was saying about take responsibility, okay, to build trust and community, okay, yeah, I think that's better, it's even shorter, it's good. We can fit this all in a, in a tree, according to rules.
That would be amazing.
Somebody make a hashtag.
I don't know.
I'm kind of like working on this second.
I think the second one is good.
Wait.
The highlighted one, reading the highlighted one?
Outreach and dialogue between faculty, students. Do you, um, the, the original goal did say community as part, as like, one of the.
Stakeholders?
Yeah, I, I think, I do think we need to, I, you know, I want everyone to feel like, hey.
Yeah, so because you will build trust. And communities.
Oh, boy.
Well, and sticker, there were no stakeholders.
Well, in addition to. It's also three categories.
Yeah.
Build community.
I like that idea, to bring the stakeholders first, instead of being finished with students.
Okay. It was a little redundant. Stakeholders. What about rather than stakeholders, community, I mean, then we're saying community, creation, community twice, yeah.
That's fine.
Who are stakeholders?
It's like anybody who's, who pays taxes, but doesn't. Yeah, and you wanna say taxpayers?
So, the renters are out?
I don't wanna, I don't want.
But then it becomes fiscal, right? That seems so cold. Is it?
Very business term, we use that one a lot in the end game.
Taxpayers?
I mean, outside of the, outside of our fiscal goal, uh, where we state we're gonna have a transparent budget process, what communication do we really have as a goal for, uh, stakeholders who are not faculty, family, or students?
What communication?
Yeah, like, what are our communication goals? Beyond, I mean, if someone is not a faculty, family, or student, and, and we do already in our fiscal goal, say we're gonna communicate through them through transparency, is there any other communication we're going to want?
So, why don't we, instead of listing, like, saying the BCSD will build trust and community through. trust and community through strengthened communication outreach and dialogue between all stakeholders, instead of like specifying some groups and then saying stakeholders at the end?
Right, I, I, I don't think.
Because all the ones that we mentioned, all the ones we mentioned are part of the stakeholder, right?
Yeah, and I think by just naming the three, you're leaving out administrators and staff.
All relevant constituencies.
Yeah, I.
I think if you add the word stakeholders, you can't have subgroups and then say stakeholders.
Okay, I agree, right, right. So we're getting. I'm sad to lose the list, though. I liked the list.
I think the list is kind of.
I, I kind of liked the list.
So what, so what?
When you list, you might leave someone out.
What if you lose stakeholders M dash and then list them all?
I think, I think when we get to the part of measuring, we can identify the stakeholders that we're talking about.
I just, I want to make sure, and the reason I ask that, like, what is our communication? Like, I want to make sure that we're being kind of honest in this goal. Like, are we going to be communicating with, uh, are we, do we actually take responsibility for building trust and community through communication outreach and di, are we going to be offering communication outreach and dialogue to stakeholders who are not faculty, parents, or students?
Absolutely.
And then he has, Matt has gone to like.
Community conversation. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think absolutely, we need to include people who are not.
Can we give taxpayers to?
It's an institution, so there's.
And that's what I'm, and this, and obviously, like, I mean, kind of beyond what we already acknowledge in our fiscal goal, right? We have, obviously, we have fiscal communication, which is covered in our fiscal goal. It didn't mean that we don't, I'm just actually like curious.
It's beyond fiscal. I mean, I, I think, yeah, I think what Matt spent in his entire first year doing with these community conversations, where he went to places that were not school buildings and listened to people, because everyone, everyone does have a stake in the district as taxpayer, but also just as a member of the community, I think is really important.
Yeah, and, and the, you know, you want people who don't have a direct touch point to still feel invested in public education. And so that's sort of, and it, and it doesn't have to be, I mean, like, I, I think people like to see what's happening at the school, it connects you to your community, it makes you feel positive, whether you have a child in district or not, so.
I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around stakeholder. That's like what that really means.
Still trying to wrap my head around community.
I think, this is a small thing, but would it be with also, because a lot makes it sound like they're talking to themselves. We want to be talking to them.
That makes sense.
Strengthened, that implies that we're trying to do better than we were year over year? Is that what we're saying, or?
Say that again, Flor.
Strengthened, communication. Yeah, I see what you mean there. I mean, I sort of like the word there, but I. Strong and effective.
I think direct or whatever. I, I think it's always, I, I, I mean, emphasis words are, I think, are always tricky in goals, because you.
Oh, boy. It's getting long.
What, it's got the workshop or?
No.
Attention spans us some board members.
Oh, where'd you go?
That's right, he deleted it.
Are you, wait, am I spamming the goal?
All right, so communication.
I, I'm okay with strong and effective. I mean, we get effective as.
It's difficult to measure, right? Strong is difficult to measure. Effective, you could not affect this.
I would open. But.
Open might be better.
Yeah, open better than strong.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we were trying to move away from a fortress, when that was very clearly.
Open and effective?
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to put effective.
Yeah, I think it's just open. I don't, I'm not, um, open and effective doesn't have a great ring.
Not to muddy the waters, but do we want to say timely? Or is that, I think that's implied.
I think that's how we could tell if the communication's being effective.
Yeah.
Or hoping measure by.
I have, I have others here. This is, are we down?
One more, and we have two minutes.
The fiscal one's good.
All right, so we have, the last one was care.
That's always good. Yeah, I think we care, I think that's a good.
Is everybody fine with the way care is now?
Um, two, okay, sorry. But I, I also, I mean, should we add, um, yeah, I guess every student or, I, I was also thinking of our, our faculty and staff.
I agree.
The faculty morale is important.
I mean, the whole reason this, this came up is because we were talking about restorative justice, and that's not going to just be students.
Yeah.
That take us there, so I, I think that's true.
And every member of the BCSD community.
James, I don't see, oh, you put there.
I made a, a second one. I actually made a minor tweak, just to make the grammar, I think, feel a little more active, but. Rather than say, "And the wellness of every student," I said, "That ensures the wellness of every student." I think it just grammatically makes more sense personally. I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not in any way suggesting that, uh, our faculty are an important aspect for like being considered in the culture of care, but it's almost like I would consider our faculty as the frontline of the BCSD that's hospit's doing, that's part of the fostering, you know? I don't know.
I think just from a board perspective, the board acknowledging that we're, so we would be the ones who would put support behind the admins and the staff, and then, you know, then when they feel supported, they can, and cared about, that they can, then that creates a culture of care, like that then translates across the board.
So are we fine with the care with James' edit?
Well, no, what we're discussing is the last part. Well, the wellness of every student and staff. I think we could either say, um, of all members of the, so we could say, "The BCSD will foster a culture of care dedicated to maintaining a safe and supportive emotional environment that ensures the wellness of all members of the community, the school community."
I like that.
Craig? Good. Laura?
Yeah?
James?
Sure.
Melissa?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Kristen? By the words method. All right, we're good. All right. So we have our goals written out. I think the next conversation is how we are going to measure them. But they're goals that we could adopt if we want to add to agenda later on tonight.
Well, in between meetings and before the next meeting, we will, uh, take a stab at how we'll measure them on our end, with also some action steps underneath each one.
And I forgot to ask, I know that you said that you were going to bring these to the administrators for any input. Did?
I did not.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we were inclusive.
Yeah. I, the first run.
Well, if we weren't inclusive, it wasn't our fault. That's what we need to make sure.
All right. So we're good, we're going. Question?
Is this, are we going to revisit this next week or next meeting?
So where we left is that we have the word wording of it. Matt is going to talk to the administrators to come up with some samples as how we can measure each goal. And then if we want to wait at the next board meeting, we can add it to the agenda, or if the board was comfortable, we could add it tonight if someone made a motion, but we don't have to do that. We could wait until the next board meeting and kind of formalize them a little bit more and put them on the agenda and have it so they're being read, and if anybody had, in public had any, wanted to comment on it, they would be able to do that during public comment, and then we could have them on there to adopt as our board goals.
Are we making a distinction between board goals and district goals? Or are we trying to keep them the same?
The, we're, this is, these are board goals, we're going to go into district goals.
I understand that. So, so when the administrators get together, those are the district goals, aren't they?
But the administrators have to be able to help us with how we're going to measure our board goals.
Yeah.
So that's what Matt is going to do, is how we're going to measure them.
I think the, the intermediate step is traditionally called objectives. That is the more specific thing. So what here we're saying is, you know, go west, and then objectives as Utah, and the measurement is get there by February. So, uh, in that kind of a schema, I think if things fall into place a little better.
All right, we're going to move on to the next workshop. Our next workshop is a workshop at the PTA for Board Appreciation. Just in time. I saw you walking in, I didn't want to have you wait.
Hi. So I'm Melissa Tompkins. I'm with the Public Relations Committee of the Beacon Teachers Association, with the Response Committee and one more. And we just would like to take a second to say thank you for all you do, you know, the time you give up. We do recognize that it's a volunteer position. That takes a lot of time, so we just want to say we appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate all that the teachers do for the district. You guys are on the front line with the students as well as all the support staff, and we do recognize the hard work you guys put in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
Good. Thanks.
Oh, sure.
Is this our time to, other people can appreciate?
Absolutely.
Hi, I'm Fran McHurtsis, and I'm here to thank the board for allowing the SAD Club to continue. We've brought it back. And Stansy and I are excited that we could co-advice, even though we're part of other committees or clubs already, we thought we could just band together and make this come alive again. We have our president here, Jerami Higgins. And our vice president was here, Selena Virchioso, but I thought this started at 6:30 and she had homework due, so everybody's got lots of time. So, Ms. Stansy's going to talk about our first campaign that we're presenting.
So we have some gifts for you as well. Um, he's going to come around and give you some red ribbons. Um, we would like you to wear them in support for Red Ribbon Week this week, that starts this Tuesday and ends next Tuesday. So we're going to kind of paint the high school a little red and have a red day on Friday. Um, and really the campaign is to present visible commitment to safe, healthy, and a drug-free lifestyle, so we hope that you could all support us in doing that this week by wearing the red ribbons. And we're also going to have our faculty and staff do that as well, so they'll be getting red ribbons too. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you know what SAD stands for? Students Against Distracted Decisions.
Yeah. The, uh, it's life is your journey, travel drug free. That's the campaign's motto this, this week. So every, uh, every week, every campaign, there's a different motto, and that's kind of the one. So in, in addition to that, we'll also be doing, um, some kindness post-its all around school, um, and really just, um, promoting the club and trying to get more students involved, so.
To keep the uplifted attitude at school.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Dahl. I'm a history teacher here at Beacon High School. I'm also the advisor for Student Council, and Student Council would like to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Major Alonte. I'm the student, I'm the activities coordinator of Student Council. I'm accompanied by Jenna Mazikun, our treasurer, and Jaya Wong. We want to congratulate all the board members being honored today, and your service in the district is greatly appreciated. We also just want to take the time to thank you for your support of Student Council. Without each and every one of you, the activities we have planned would not be attainable. We have exciting things planned for the future that we cannot wait for all of you to see. So to show our appreciation, we would like to present a certificate and a piece of chocolate. So first is Ms. Stradler. Ms. Flynn. Ms. Butterbid.
Thank you.
Ms. Hewer. Mr. Sane. Mr. White. Mr. Wolf. Mr. Kinsley. And Mr. Vertuxki. So thank you once again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello.
I know you from somewhere.
Um, so NHS wants to thank everyone. Hello. We, Annie's going to pass out some pencils that we got this year, and we just wanted to remind everyone that, um, this Friday is our costume volleyball tournament. November 9th is our Ruby Night, where we're showing Creditless Two, and then Project Hope for us also started this week, where we're collecting cans. So all of that will be happening, and we're collecting cans, uh, during Ruby Night as well.
NHS is all over the place. Um, we help with the middle school, we help with the elementary schools, and we tutor here at the high school, so there's plenty of stuff that we do. So we just want to make sure that you know that we're here, and we thank you for allowing us to be all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Noah and Annie are our secretary and treasurer. And they're here for you guys, too. Thank you. PTSO would like to thank all of you for everything you do and for allowing PTSO to run and run the, uh, programs that we do. They were, all wanted to come, but we weren't sure what time this was, so, um, they're here in spirit. So, um, thank you, thank you again.
Thank you. All right, and we also had the Beacon administrators give us a, uh, edible arrangement, so, pretty helpful stuff to that, so. Thank you, everybody, for acknowledging the volunteerism that the board members give, and we do appreciate it, and we do it for the greater good of the students. So we do appreciate you guys recognizing, and we hope that we continue to bring Beacon to future and further places. So thank you. And our fourth presentation for the workshop is Duchess Bosie's About the Capital Project. And thank you for your patience.
What's that?
Thank you for your patience.
No, not at all. It's nice to, uh, to be appreciated. I, I think it's a little old, but it's a very, very recognizing, your fine work.
My colleague, Nora Merritt, has a few handouts for you, and the good news is we can start the PowerPoint while she's handing those out, because they only come up a little later in the presentation. One of them is the PowerPoint, just so you have a copy of it. And, um, along with Nora, who is our executive director of Human Resources, we are joined by Rebecca Gerald, who is the coordinator of library systems. Thank you for joining us, Gerald. So, um, I'm gonna just go through this PowerPoint. Is there a clicker, or do I?
Go play for it. I'll play. I want to get up.
So I'll, I'm going to go ahead and start.
All right, just let me know when.
Oh, can I, I can do it from there?
You can, it's mic'd up. It's mic'd up here too.
Okay. Perfect. That's what I'll do. Great. And I'm just, just checking. Good. Perfect. So, um, so very simply, a couple of important things. I, I know I've met with some members of this board. We have a couple of more school board meetings like this. We're out doing public meetings at libraries and at, with Rotary and civic clubs like that. If you have any suggestions, we, we haven't hit large numbers of people and we're a little anxious that everybody get the information. The project is cost neutral. It creates real college and career opportunities and it will provide flexibility for exceptional students in Duchess County. So I just want to say a word about exceptional. The whole point of a BOCES is to address exceptional circumstance, exceptional people. Certainly, that's very clear in some of the programs we offer. But as a high school principal and then as a superintendent, you sometimes have one student who needs one more class to graduate. And if that student happens to be a career in tech student, he could come to us after this project is over, pick up his English, pick up his PE, and then in the afternoon, pick up another career in tech course. So it's not going to be 100 people, but in those circumstances where you need to tailor a program for a particular student, that's kind of an easy way to do it. And that, that will give us the opportunity to do that with this plan. So just another way of saying it, renovate the Career and Tech Institute, relocate the Alternative High School, and recondition the Salt Point Center. And for those of you who haven't heard much about this, let me just remind you that the Alternative High School, sometimes called Beta, is currently sited on Duchess Turnpike in a business park. It has been there for over twen-, for 29 years and is just not the place that you would want kids to be if you had any control over it. They're not great landlords. We, a couple of years ago, they had horrible flooding because the roof wasn't taken care of. We had to cancel school for three days for those kids, which is also a nightmare for principals and superintendents because you don't really have an alternative placement for these kids. So we'll, we'll talk more about that. But, and Salt Point Center is our K8 program. Most of the students in that program are students with IEPs, but we do have some students who are general ed but have other challenges in the social-emotional area. All right. So can't see this quite as well as I can see it, but this is just an example of what happens when you don't do capital projects for 50 years. We have not had a capital project, major capital project in Duchess BOCES since we began in the 60s. Nine years ago, a, the BOCES came out with a, a capital project. It was not supported by the voters. And if we had, it had passed nine years ago, we'd be halfway done financing it at this point, but it didn't happen. And this is just emblematic of the kind of deterioration that occurs after 50 years. And although we do maintenance, you really need, as you know, funds to do the kind of major capital projects and upgrades that, that we need. This is just a class in auto tech. That big blue structure to the left is the front-end alignment machine. And these students are sitting in folding chairs in the middle of the lab where they get their instruction. So in front of them is instructional technology, which is not served well by being in the middle of a big garage. So dust and dirt and particulate is coming in and wearing that stuff out a lot faster. But without desks and tables to do project-based learning, this is not an ideal situation. So in my dream world, this is a fantasy that I have, that we would create two labs here in the, the one on the right would be our ag lab, that's a tractor in that classroom. And on the far side would be a course in athletic training. And they would share the classroom in the middle so that if they wanted to work on projects or we wanted to preserve the instructional technology, we could do that. As you know, we can't really do all of the ren-, all of the planning and design of this building until the bond passes because you have to pay the architects. So this is just that, just a fantasy at this point. But this is the kind of improvements we'd like to make to the Career and Tech Center. So as I mentioned, our BOCES Alternative High School program has been at this Poughkeepsie Business Park on Duchess Turnpike for over 25 years. And you'll see, if you look at that, that these are steel fabricate, steel fabricators, and basically warehouses. So none of those fingers, none of those people in those warehouses and manufacturing places are fingerprinted. And we have panel trucks driving around the campus all day long. So it's really quite a, quite a challenge, if you think in terms of school safety. So this is a picture of the side entrance of our high school. In the front, toward the, toward the right is a door that our students use to come in and go out. And you can't see it quite so well here, but maybe in your handout, that other structure on the left is a loading dock. So I just want you to see how close the workers in this business park are to our students. Quite close. And again, we don't know who those people are and they certainly are not fingerprinted. So some specifics about the project. $36.8 million is the proposal. Members of this board agreed with the other 12 component districts in the county to do an intermunicipal agreement, which took, which saved $1.7 million over that $36.8. So we've already done some things to kind of manage the cost. This project will integrate 60,000 square feet of space, really space we're taking from the business park. But that business park is actually 80,000 square feet. So working with our architects, we've been able to find some efficiencies and reduce the footprint, another attempt on our part to kind of save costs. Also, less space to heat and cool and all the rest of it. And we do not really have a high-tech conference space in Duchess County. We have two classrooms that we broke down the wall and we use that as our conference space. And to get to that conference space, we call it Room 301, you have to walk past classrooms filled with kids. It's very insecure and not ideal. I already talked a little bit about security at Beta, but our Career and Tech building itself is also not ADA compliant. It's built on the side of the hill like Millbrook is. Very difficult to help with people who have physical disabilities, although this plan will help with that considerably. We'll have an elevator and be able to reach two of the levels by elevator.
What's a high-tech conference space?
I'm going to show you in a, in a second, I think. So our architect is with us tonight, Russ Davidson. And this, he'll talk to you a little bit about the plan. And here it is.
So hi, I'm Russ Davidson with KGND Architects. It's good to be here tonight. So this is a site plan. Our secret code is the blue is new construction and the yellow is existing. And if you, any of you were around a few years ago when the BOCES asked first, the fundamental difference here is that this is being conceived as an addition to the Career and Technical Institute rather than a standalone building. And that's an important distinction because, as you know, in schools, things change every year. And you might have a slightly bigger Career and Technical program one year or a slightly bigger Alternative High School program another year. And this allows that that barrier between the two buildings to, to shift. Dr. Houli also mentioned that there's 80,000 square feet at Beta, but we're able to provide 60,000 square feet here and not lose any capacity. And that's because when the two sites were separate, they duplicated some facilities and actually some facilities were missing. So this will have a full-service cafeteria, library, and physical education space. So students who come to the Alternative High School or Career and Technical Institute can pick up the one or two other courses that they need with this full-service facility and cut down on transportation and time off educational tasks. I don't know, we have floor plans? So it's been conceived as, you know, sort of a high-quality facility, like your new school's here. And I see you have a capital project. And BOCES has not done one in 50 years. So we do about 10 of these a year for schools throughout the Hudson Valley. So this is just a normal, good-quality school facility designed to last for 50 to 100 years. So the plan there on the lower left has the conference center. So that has its own entrance in the front of the facility. So when teachers come from all over the county for professional development, they don't have to go through the school. They'll have their own secure entry, own toilet rooms, and it'll be separated from the school facility. And if they so choose, they can use the library and cafeteria as part of that professional development opportunity. Then all the way around in the back at the top of the page, right there, is a single secure point of entrance for both the Alternative High School and the Career and Technical Institute. So as you all know, school security is a big concern for everybody. This facility was designed, CTI, 30 and 40 years ago had none of those advantages. So this will allow us to have a single secure point of entry for all students. And Alternative High School students will go to the right and Career and Technical Institute students will go to the left. And all the purple areas are, are some of those places in CTI that'll be renovated. So that points to some of the pictures that you saw of deteriorated facilities. It's not been poorly maintained. It's just 40 years old and it's time to redo toilet rooms. The three parallel wings are all on slightly different levels. So a new elevator in the blue, new construction to the left will connect them as well as a lift. And then the other important thing is between the blue and the purple, that's where that line can move from year to year. And you can have general classroom space and sort of state-of-the-art Career and Technical spaces. So the Alternative High School has a high staff-to-student ratio, so there is a lot of office space in there. But that is really part of the mission of providing for those children with special needs. The building is also tucked into the side of the hill, so there's a partial floor below. But all the classrooms will be daylight and none of them will be windowless. So it's a fairly conservatively budgeted and that's the basic concept for the program.
So to continue, I'll just, well, does anybody have any questions about the plan? This picture that you see up here, that you also have in your packet, is kind of the reverse. In this case, the blue is the existing, the white is the new construction. You'll see Salt Point Center to the upper right, Salt, I'm sorry, Salt Point Turnpike to the upper right. And the main entrance is, is over there. And the buses will come all the way to the back of the entrance as, as Russ pointed out. So for our K8 students, this plan will offer more capacity at Salt Point Center. Although we're not doing a lot of work at Salt Point Center, we're doing some, but it will create capacity by freeing up some of those spaces that are now being used as storage. In the Salt Point Center, which again is our K8 program, we have, we've had quite a number of, quite an increase in, in student population. And there are still more programs that we would offer if we had the space. So once this is approved and done, our Salt Point Center could offer two programs that are not offered anywhere. One of those is called Twice Exceptional. These are kids who are highly gifted but also struggle with social-emotional issues. Autism is the one that comes to mind, but there are other things that impact their success. If you think of someone like the Rain Man, that, that kind of student really doesn't have a place in this county, in this region. That would be a middle school student who would need college-level math, but would also need the social-emotional supports of counseling and therapists to help him manage the world. Another program that we offer at the high school level is, we, we call it Life Skills. It is kids who are going to learn to live independently. So it's hygiene, it's managing your living space, it's working with appliances and doing those kinds of things. We have that for high school and now middle school students, but we don't have it for the early, early kids. And typically, those students go out of their public school and out of BOCES to Catholic programs that are available in the region. So those are two examples of things that we could do for the K8 population that we work with. Increased space at this location to meet the growing need will mean less travel outside of the county. As you know, there are people probably from Beacon who are traveling to Westchester and places like that for special ed services. One of the things I meant to do when I started was to just review for you what your student enrollment looks like from Beacon. So if you'll let me interrupt this for just a second. You, you currently have seven students at SBC, Salt Point Center. You have five students enrolled in Beta and you have five students enrolled in in-district classrooms. These are BOCES classrooms that are sited in school districts. And then in terms of, in terms of the Career and Tech, you have a total of 59 students, four of those in auto body and collision. Uh-oh. I've done something here. One student in animal and plant science, three students in computer hardware and tech, seven in construction trades, seven in cosmetology, three in culinary arts, four in early childhood, two in graphic design, seven in introduction to health occupations and nursing. You have 11 in security and law enforcement. You have two in trade electricity and two in TV video production, three in veterinary science, and one in welding and fabrication. Okay. So that just gives you a sense of, of the scale that Beacon is involved. For our nine through 12 students, these are the ones that are typically in our Career Science and Career Tech and also our Beta. We have talked to Duchess Community College. I'm sure you're aware that they are doing a, kind of a strategic plan about their facilities. And they're very interested in working further south in Duchess County, near Beacon, because they understand that there's not a junior college in Putnam. And they think that, I think that their consultants believe that there is a need to have something in the southern part of the county. We've talked with them about sharing classes and things down here. I know that's a concern of this board. And we just don't know what that'll look like because they're right in the throes of this. Improve career-ready graduates with integrated programs. The next big thing in Career and Tech is, is not what you think, which is, oh, they're going to have a drone program. Because those kinds of programs might last for five years and then they go away. The next big thing in Career and Tech that hasn't really happened is for students who have this expertise and interest in this particular field to work with other students with different backgrounds to solve problems and create projects. So it's project-based learning at its best. And in that classroom that you saw in my fantasy, you put kids together in welding and food services and they solve a problem about how we, you know, create cooking utensils or how we build something in our ag program that will better serve plant growth or, or animal husbandry. So it's the, it's the interaction of those two disciplines more than just the continuation of more and more welding. And that's what we hope will be the innovation that we'll see here. And then finally, for adult learners, remember that... And then finally, for adult learners, remember that our Adult Learning Institute is, serves adults from all over the county, and the great thing about our career and tech center is it's used in the morning and in the daytime for our 11th and 12th graders, but at night it is used by adult, the Adult Learning Institution. So an improvement to the welding classroom is an improvement that really pays dividends because that building is used night and day. So by improving this facility, we're also improving the opportunities for adults in the county, as well as the professional development that school districts use for workshops and things that we would have in our conference center. Now, I'm not stupid, and I know you're near Putnam Northern Westchester, which is pretty palatial, and if you want to see a really high-tech conference center, that's where you should go. What I'm doing in this slide is just comparing Duchess BOSI's, which is at the top, and Ulster BOSI's, which is not the Cadillac. So again, at the top is our Room 301, where we knocked down the wall and put up some smartboards. Down below is Ulster BOSI's, same, their conference center, which can be divided into, I think, four classrooms with lots of AV equipment and all kinds of flexibility that we don't really have in ours, not to mention the fact that you're walking past classrooms of kids when you come to our facility. So by having an improved conference center, we will attract the kinds of professional development that currently go to Putnam Northern Westchester or go to Ulster, because our facility is not quite so fancy. So the savings are to eliminate escalating rental costs and cost avoidance. Transportation costs will decrease, and we'll be able to keep more of our students in Duchess County. So let me talk to you a second about cost avoidance. This warehouse that we have our high school in is, charges us for everything that we have to do to make it classrooms. So as long as you're going to have classrooms in that building, we have to maintain, install and maintain the fire alarm, the windows and doors that are coded by SED, State Education Department, air conditioning, all those kinds of things. And after 29 years, you can well imagine that some of those are reaching or have reached the end of their life. So that becomes a cost avoidance. By building this new facility, we will be able to avoid having to repair those air conditioners and things like that that have been there for a long time. So you have a sheet of paper, a small sheet, eight and a half by 11, that kind of talks about the cost neutrality, and if you look at it, it has, at the bottom right-hand corner, it has a Page 1 and a Page 2. On Page 1, what we tried to do is run all of the costs. If we don't do the construction, if we continue to lease on the left, and the capital project, if the capital project is done, you see it on the right. And what we've done is calculated the cost to get, getting IT to Beta. The utilities that we think will save based on projections by new high-efficiency heating and cooling. And you'll see that the capital project, in terms of direct expense, is more expensive in those first 21 years, but once you talk about the courier cost, staff travel, and the cost avoidance, which is a big number, and that we calculated with our engineers in terms of what work needed to be done and how soon, you come up with a slight benefit by doing the capital project. If you turn it over, you see what happens in, really in the 21st year. If you look down with me at utilities, we will still have some utilities while we, while we continue to rent until the building is built. So even though this vote is December of this year, and we're not going to be able to build that next day, so we will continue to rent for a period of time, which is why under the capital project, you still see costs for utilities and direct expenses and some additional, additional costs. But by the end of that 20 years of financing, let's say, we are actually $1.6 million to the good, and that will be passed along to all the school district. That savings will reduce the cost for all school districts who are components. So that's why we call it cost neutral. It's cost neutral eventually, but like, like a school district anywhere, if you're not renting the equipment, ultimately you own it, and that, that is the, that's the benefit. So this is just another visual. This is one of the air conditioners on top of Beta. This is reaching the end of its useful life. It is in standing water. That roof is not ours to take care of, so when we install this new air conditioner, I'm sure there's going to be a little tussle between whose, how we make holes in their roof. You can imagine that's going to be a, not an easy proposition, but this just gives you an idea of what we're up against. So at this stage, interest rates are still relatively low. I've mentioned the intermunicipal agreement. State aid is available to most districts, and we'll talk about that in just a second for Beacon. Each district pays a proportionate share based on its enrollment, and there is a total of $24 million in state aid that will be shared across the various districts. And to really break it out for you, if you'll go to your, what I call the big paper, we've highlighted Beacon for you, and if you don't mind, I'd just like you, like to walk you through it. I think this breaks it down very nicely for you. So your arwata, this is the, your attendance or your enrollment as a portion of Duchess County, you represent 7% of students in the county, so that's your share of this capital project. Your aid that you get is 53.7. Now, this is not construction aid like you get in a regular construction project, I don't know what that is. This is BOSI's construction aid, which is, which is calculated slightly differently. When I was a superintendent, what I used to say to the voters is, for every dollar you spend, 53 cents, in this case, 53.7 cents, comes back to you in state aid. Now, the estimated bond percentage is 88%. That means that the entire project is not eligible for aid. You probably know that parking lots, for example, are not aidable, so we think about 88% of this is aidable. So your component share of this entire project is $2.6 million. If, as we did for this exercise, you bonded that over a 20-year period, and so that's the number I keep using, you can do whatever you please, but we just had to get some consistent numbers to show comparisons. Your annual cost would be about $190,000, 195.71. But your annual estimate, your annual, estimated annual aid on that is about $90,000. So your, then your cost would be about $100,000, but you're currently paying rent. You pay your share of the rent of this facility. When you take that out, we're talking $22,000, and your estimated net local share for that 20-year period is $78,000, and that's about .21 of your tax levy. For a house in Beacon School District, and this is based on the average for the county, which is a home of $275,000, they would pay $8 in taxes for this, $7 if they have star, and $6 if they have senior star. So that's how it breaks out per household per year. I'm really going to finish this presentation, I promise. So that breaks it out for you. This is just what I said, across the county, it's between $6 and $14 a year for each house. And again, just to reiterate, we, we need to do some more work with Duchess Community College and our students, but really, our job is to help prepare skilled workers for the county. Again, first major project in 50 years. I don't know how often you do them, but I would bet you wouldn't let 10 years go by without a major project. And just as a reminder, none of the students at BOSI's are our students, they're all your students. Our entire population is made up of students who come to us from Beacon and Rhinebeck and Red Hook and Poughkeepsie, et cetera. And many of them come from very nice facilities to go to our facilities, which are not nearly as good. So the vote is December 11th. We hope to have the design to SED on September, in September of 2019, competitive bidding in April and May of 2020, break ground in June of that year, and complete the project in 2022. Voting again, December 11th, which is a Tuesday. Voting will be from 12 noon to 8:00 PM. There will be 14 polling sites, that's every school district in the county plus BOSI's, and, yeah, let me back up. So let me just say a few words about that. Instead of having 14 voting districts, we have one voting district, which is the entire county, and all those 14 places are polling sites, which means that if you live in Beacon but you work in Poughkeepsie and you want to vote in Poughkeepsie on your way home, you can stop at that polling place and vote there. And what we'll ask you to do is to write your name, give us your address, and put your signature. You know that for school votes, you don't have to be a registered voter, you have to be a qualified voter, and a qualified voter is someone who is 18 years of age or older, who is a U.S. citizen, and who has lived in the catchment area, in this case, the BOSI's catchment area of Duchess County, for more than 30 days. So you can vote wherever you like, and we, we will look for a simple majority, which means one over half of the ballot cast. So just a quick look, these are the locations. Beacon's vote will be at the central office conference room. Here are the rest of them. Just a reminder, don't forget to vote. We do have a plan for mailers to go home, but unlike you, we do not have an easy way to reach households in the entire county, right? So we can't use our, we can't send things home with kids because they won't get to every household. So we are doing a mailing, but just to give you an idea of the scope of this, just a simple postcard with all those addresses for the voting, et cetera, et cetera, is about $18,000, and that's, you know, we are not also allowed to have a fund balance at a BOSI's. When we have money at the end of the year, it has to be distributed back to the component district. So this is a big, big challenge, and we have a lot of eggs in our basket. So I'm happy to take questions, if you have any. I'm sorry that took so long.
Yeah, one question. This cost, the estimated net local share, how does that affect our 2% tax levy cap?
Yes, it's very challenging. That .21 on this big sheet is the portion of your cap. Since Sherry's not here, I'm looking to you. So I think that would come out of your cap. Now, you could lower that in a number of different ways. So if this passes in December, you will know in December of 2018 that we're going to go forward with this, and you could establish at Beacon a reserve for this project, and that would be a way of managing it. Because of that, even though we had everybody fund it for 20 years, we just used an arbitrary number, you could start socking away money, and because the first payment, I think, is the following year in July, you could actually look at two years of putting money in that reserve. You'll also get a surplus back from BOSI's, but I know most school districts use that for other things, but that's another source. So it's not going to be easy. The other thing you could do is you could bond it for 30 years if you wanted, and that would lower the percentage of the cost. I'm not sure you'd want to do that, but you could. Other questions?
So the purpose of your presentation today is really for us, but it's also for the community, because they're the ones that are actually voting. We're not voting on this project, correct?
Right. Well, we'd like you to vote. As members of the community, we'd like you to vote, but absolutely. Our goal is, you've heard from me once, now we wanted to give you the information now that it's a little more fully formed, but you're absolutely right, and we think it's very, as much as we're going out to rotaries and libraries, we also know sometimes when it has to do with education spending, people come back to you, and we felt like one of our major responsibilities is to make sure that school boards hear what is going on in the county, so that if somebody says, tell me about this BOSI's project, you can at least feel like you've had some information. I will say on that point, we understand clearly this is our job, to communicate, to explain, to sit down with people, and I'm certainly not asking you to do that. But please do not hesitate to have someone call me and reach out to me. Superintendents have been willing to put our, a link to our website on the project, on their, on their website, and that has led to teachers and retired teachers calling us, which is exactly what we need and exactly what we want. But you, if you have a neighbor or somebody who's really frustrated about this, put them in our direction, and I will be happy to sit down and talk to anybody. Yes, sir?
So our share for this project is 2,000, well, 2 million, estimated, so an estimated 2,620,160, and some of it's state aid, but so is it like 47% of state aid?
Yes.
That number?
No, no, 53% of state aid.
53%.
So more than half is aided by the state.
Okay.
And then in addition, ultimately, your rental cost will go away, which is 22,000 a year. So if you think of it in round terms, it's about $78,000 times 20, plus interest rates or interest payments. That's your cost.
So I'm just trying to figure out, so then we really don't, we don't need a bond for 2,600, we need a bond for 1,200-something?
Right.
Right?
Well, I mean, I'm going to defer to your business official since my business official isn't here. Yes, but you will certainly not be bonding, you will certainly not be looking at that 2.6 million, that's for sure.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, I appreciate it.
I did take advantage of the opportunity to do the inspection tour up at the facility, and in my opinion, it does, well, we send our students there, and I'm proud to say that we take better care of our facilities than BOSI's does, but it's not BOSI's fault. They did try to go for a bond issue a number of years ago, and the landlord opened up his big mouth and took out ads in the paper saying, oh, it's going to do terrible company of taxes, and it didn't pass. And I hope that doesn't happen again. You might want to have a game plan for what happens if it does.
Yep.
The other thing that I would say is that I'm also familiar with the Poughkeepsie Business Park, and have been to some of the businesses that exist there, and this isn't really the place to have a school operating. It really isn't. I'd like to see a better facility that looks like a school facility for when our kids go there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals.
So move.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Right on.
Posed.
Motion to adjourn.
What is expected?
Return 15 minutes from now, about 8:30.
We do have one correction to the agenda. It is item 12.03, P3, is a corrupted name. We just said James Palmer, now it's James Wyer. Did anybody else have any other adjustments to the agenda?
Yeah, I had asked about the, whether we want to ask to be a part of that local elected official committee for the RFP of the former Beacon corruption.
Oh.
I thought that's on, isn't that?
It's on the agenda for discuss Camp Beacon.
We put it on there.
Oh, it is on there?
Unfinished business.
Sorry, missed it.
Any other adjustments or corrections to the agenda? Any student or school presentations? Any parent groups? Open to the public, no one signed up? All right, superintendent's report.
All right. Just first, first of all, board recognition. Thank you to the board for everything that you do. We, our I provided you with a book to read. So instead of chocolate and all these nice things, I gave you more stuff to do. And, but it's a good book, Ted Denter Smith. He was one of the people behind the movie Most Likely to Succeed, which is a pretty cool documentary that came out a couple of years ago. And I think this book fits in nicely with the strategic planning work that we're going to be doing. And so, but, but anyway, just thanks to the board, every member of the board for all the time that you put in. I appreciate it personally, and I know this, everyone in the district does too. Speaking of strategic coherence, we kick off tomorrow at 4 o'clock with Jonathan Costa. He's going to be giving us an overview, the members of the committee. We have members of the community. We have parents, we have teachers, we have TAs, we have administrators, all joining us. And we're excited to get started. Right after that, I will be doing some communication with the entire district, because we're going to be starting our very first thought exchange. And the thought exchange is going to be focused on developing this profile of graduate. So the thought exchange is an online platform. There's an app you can put on your phone. It's also web-based, that you start sort of these conversations and, and add to conversations or, you know, put your thoughts in or just like certain things. And it's a way of gathering a lot of qualitative data. And so, so that will be starting soon, and we'll be putting the communication out about that probably by the end of the week. And just something a little bit into the future, on November 6th, we have a professional learning day. And whenever we're planning one of these days, I think it makes us realize how we need like a lot more of these days, because we try to get so much into one day. But some of the things being planned for this day are restorative practices training for our secondary teachers. We have technology training on both Google Classroom and the Dell Interactive Boards. We have some culture responsive teaching training happening. We have some of our literacy curriculum work moving forward. We have some work with the next generation science standards happening for our teachers. We have a very action-packed day. We're trying to figure out a way to plan. We haven't got the touches, you know, at the beginning of the year, we did the ice cream social. We're trying to figure out a way to end the day and with some little nice food activity that if we can get it organized, we're going to invite the board to help us with that, or whoever's free on that day to come help us. And update on just, people have been asking me about the theater at the high school. The theater is back open again, and the work was completed about a week and a half ago. Serv pro did a very thorough job, cleaned every chair. We sent the curtain away to be cleaned, and that's coming back, or has it?
This week.
It's coming back this week. They also cleaned all the duck work. Everything is great. It's open. In fact, if you walk past it right now, Beacon Players is back in there practicing for a chorus line. They were thrilled to be back in. And so are the community folks who have the space reserved over the next few months. Everything is back to normal and working, and almost all of that work is completed. There's a few, a few rugs and some teacher workspaces that we ripped out that we're replacing the, the flooring in those rooms, and, and that is just about it. So all of that work is, is just about done with air quality in the high school. And then the last thing, this is something that will go, some of these items are things that will go in a superintendent blog in a couple of days. But the last one is just an idea we've been tossing around the last couple of days. This is especially focused at the elementary level, but we get a lot of input on things that people feel should happen with our playgrounds, our play areas, our play spaces, our blacktop. And so, you know, we hate to create like lots of structures, but we want to create an ad hoc committee that kind of feeds into the board facilities committee. We're going to ask for a representative from each PTO at the elementary level and possibly the middle school level. We're going to ask those principals to be a part of the committee. We don't envision a ton of meetings, maybe three or four tops. What we want to do is start just really taking a really good look at what's at each school, what needs to happen at each school, and develop sort of a budget timeline for the work at each school, because we get a lot of requests. All of them are great. I want all these things to happen. But we want to create some sort of format for these requests to go through and also to feed into work of the board and feed into the board facilities. So we'll be putting communication out about that committee. I think we're going to try to schedule the committees so they're kind of in line with facilities committees, so we can report to that committee. But there's lots of room for improvement with our play areas. We want to get kind of a more comprehensive plan together with those areas. And with that, I'm done, Mr. White. All right. So next we have unfinished business. Anthony emailed and asked if we can have a discussion about Camp Beacon. Anthony, do you want to start the conversation?
Yes. Yeah, so I know we, we put in an RFPI, which didn't really have a lot of scope in it, but while, and while it was well received by Empire State Development Corporation, I don't necessarily feel that we're going to submit an RFP. So if we're not going to submit an RFP, I'm, I'm aware that there's something, something of a local committee of elected officials that are reviewing, reviewing proposals, so, or something. They're giving, because they actually were the ones that tried to do a thumbs down on the Doe Fund proposal that was submitted back in 2014. So what I feel, since we're, since they're, it's right next door to us, and since we are vested interested in more than one way in that property, I feel that we, we as a board should ask that we have representation on this committee of elected officials.
Who's running the committee?
I, as far as I know, it's, I don't know who's running the committee itself, but the Empire State Development Corporation grouped them, recruited them.
Do you have any like more specifics besides just like the Empire State? Is grouping who?
For some reason, I can't seem to hit the scribe link in the building. I don't know if it's blocked. But the Mayor Casal, Town Supervisor, La Cola, Serena's office, Frank Cartalo's office. I can't remember if anybody else was in there, but it was about six elected officials, I believe, that were in this committee, and the school district was not one of them.
I think it's a good idea. We should push for that. I agree with what you're suggesting. We are elected officials. Why are we left out?
So you're, so you're asking, you're thinking if we should go and approach the Empire State Development Organization and request that somebody from the Board of Education be, be represented in the committee?
Yes.
I, I think some of the background on this is that, well, there was a proposal in the first round from an outfit called the Doe Fund. And that was moving along until a number of local officials decided to write a letter to Empire State Development saying they didn't like it for various reasons. I think Empire State may have become somewhat sensitized to the opinions of local officials. That negative thought that came up about the Doe Fund did not emanate from us. We weren't really in the picture. We weren't signatories to that letter, but a lot of other people were. So I suspect that this has something to do with trying to avoid bad relations with local officials, because they got burdened before. I think they'd be interested to have our, our input.
Gee, is there a deadline, Anthony?
There's a deadline for the RFP, but there's no deadline to send us some communication that, that we want to be on the committee.
No, is there like a time? Do you know when the committee's meeting?
I have no, no, I have no information on that.
Well, the, the RFP deadline is December.
Yes, in December.
Or so, something about there. Early December.
So I'm just trying to figure out the process that's to go about. So do you want to, is everybody in agreement that we should submit a letter to Empire State?
Development Fund.
Development Fund?
Yeah, Development Corporation, yes.
All right. Do we want our attorneys to draft the letter or to, to do that?
Yeah, I think that would be wise.
Sure.
And then basically the letter's going to state that we are interested in having a member be on the committee to review the RFPs?
No, the letter would say that we would like to join the committee of local elected officials that are reviewing projects for the former Beacon Correctional Facility.
Say that again, join committee to?
Join the committee of local elected officials that are, that are determining the future of the former Beacon Correctional Facility.
Is this committee the decider, the decider for what happens with the property?
I think they're advisors, but I don't know. All I can say, all I know of its existence is the letter where they, where they, they didn't want the Doe Fund project.
Well, the state owns the land, right?
Yeah.
And so the, the Empire State Development Corporation is going to be the, like, the body that makes the final decision, but they're going to be guided by?
By this committee.
By this committee. That's what, I mean, we did a conference follow-up, we played back on what we sent to the RFI.
Okay, so I'll reach out to our attorneys. It seems like we're on consensus to draft a letter. I'll bring it back to the November board meeting, or I'll have Kelly put it on board docs.
Yeah, I mean, I would add a sentence. If I can, I would add a sentence that, A, that we're next door, and B, that we are elected officials, and, and C, that we represent the Beacon City School District, you know, to support the fact that we want to, we want to be on this committee, or represented beyond this committee.
Okay. So I'll share that through board docs once our attorneys draft it, we can look at it, and then if it's okay to go, we'll submit it then. All right. Anything else for the Camp Beacon? Hearing them go to new business, Meredith started talking about, to the board, about the Lower Hudson Education Coalition at the last board meeting, and you want to have a discussion about?
Yeah.
Whether we should join or not?
Yeah, this isn't something that we necessarily need to vote on as a board, but I wanted to bring it to the board. The Dutchess County School Board Association, it seems like they're, they're trying to really take an attack from what they've been doing. I'm not exactly sure what they were doing, but the, the new approach is to, they already had been involved with the Lower Hudson Education Coalition, but together they decided to hire a lobbyist firm to really try to amplify our voice in Albany. It's not, it's not a huge cost, and I think my hesitation to do it, I think it's under $1,000 a year, I think it's $882 a year or something like that, to pay the dues to the Lower Hudson Education Coalition. But I felt like, even though it doesn't require a board vote, I thought it'd be an interesting discussion, kind of because of what we talked about, we formed this new committee or changed our committee to be more, more toward advocacy. And I, I think in principle, it's a very good idea. The, the one red flag for me was really that the example that they had used about what they had done last year was to write a memo of concern regarding APPR. And I felt like that was, that wasn't exactly what I would have pushed for. It seemed, you know, it seemed pretty mild compared to what my personal feelings are about the APPR. I haven't seen the, the actual memo, and I think it might be worth reading, but, so in general, I sort of, I just wanted to bring it to everyone and say that this is, this is the direction that the Dutchess County School Board Association wants to go in now. The Lower Hudson Education Coalition is Putnam, Westchester, Rockland, and Dutchess. Is that right? So we have, we have a small voice in the terms, in terms of how many people are on this steering committee for it. We have only one member as compared to the other districts having several members. But the benefit is that Kelly Laffin is our member, and she is the head of steering committee. So I guess she has one voice, but it's perhaps a little bit louder than the others. So I'm not, I think it's probably worth doing it for a year and seeing, seeing what we think. And there were concerns from other, like from Rhinebeck saying, you know, that they also were concerned about how, how much weight our, you know, our concerns would have in this, in this group. And I think, but I think it might be worth seeing what happens over the year and deciding for ourselves at that point to move on and continue them with them.
Craig, would that be something as a chair of the Public Relations Legislative Committee?
I don't know. I think it's probably a good thing to, as, to state it, to join it and see how it goes. Whatever it's advocating for are likely to be things that are important to us too.
Well, I was going to say before determining whether to join it, like maybe that committee could vet it to kind of come up with?
Look into it.
Look into it more, say, what have they been advocating for in the past, what representation and stuff, and maybe that could be part of that committee work?
I think it's a good idea. We should probably look into it. And there's no deadline or anything here to be concerned about really, except that time passes, you know?
Right, I mean, I think the invoice is here. That's the, but, no, I don't think we, and we can, you know, we'll see Kelly. Are you going in as well?
Yeah.
So we can talk to her more about it. It was a little bit of a hard, you know, this was my first meeting and sort of felt like I had jumped on a bus that was already moving. So I was, I kept asking questions that I think maybe were not, you know, that other people's maybe already given the answers to. So it'd be nice to have a conversation with her person who did that.
Is the rest of the board okay if the Public Relations Advocacy Legislative Committee vets this a little bit more and then comes back with a recommendation to the board?
Yes.
I'm okay with that, but I'm concerned about the invoice. What is our, what is our commitment to this invoice?
Well, if we decide to move forward with them.
Does it cost to be?
Okay, but we haven't like signed a contract already.
No. What we're saying is that the Public Relations Advocacy Legislative Committee would vet it, come back to the board with a recommendation as to, hey, we feel it's worth the cost, and this is what they do, and this is how we feel it could be beneficial to the Beacon City School District, or, hey, this is what we feel we should not do, and so that committee would come back to the board with a full recommendation.
Right. I agree with that.
Anthony?
I, I came across them when I was doing some research. They had some, some, they had done some research on something, and I can't remember what it was, but I, you know, I kind of feel that the dues is 875 hours, or maybe steep as, it's a district dues. And they, I think they, you know, that they're on our side. So I mean, I kind of feel like networking, especially in this, in this environment, is probably, it will serve not just the district well, it will serve our students well.
I'm not opposed to it. I just think that we need to look into it with fidelity and do our due diligence before we spend any money on a dues, because we can network without paying the dues in the municipal conventions or Dutchess County School Board Association. So all I'm saying is let's vet it and then come back with a recommendation from the committee.
All right. Committee reports include the board comments. Noah, Anthony?
All right. So we had a meeting with each class president on Friday, and we went over a wide variety of stuff. But for mostly what I want to talk about is, we did hear a lot of concerns based on the electives at the high school. Not so much that they're bad electives, but we looked at the most popular college major of high school students, which is in the business. And we really have nothing in the high school based on business. We have financial math, but that doesn't really match with the business major. So students were, they want more electives based on what they're going to college for, is how they put it. So we, we're trying to get a sense of that, so we are planning on doing a survey like we did last year, but instead of us putting out the survey, we're going to put it out to each student in their either homeroom or English class. So that means we could get, last year we only had 40 responses on our survey, so hopefully we can get a better idea of what students are looking for in these electives. And then we also talked about, we had this one, the vice president of the senior class, he got back from an Ivy League visit, and the admissions counselor at his Ivy League school said that they take on average students with eight AP courses. And for Beacon, the average person would, right now, we have seniors graduating with three or four. And for Beacon, the average person would, right now, we have seniors graduating with three or four. So there's definitely concerns with seniors over the amount of AP classes we offer compared to other high schools and how that will play into their college decisions. So we're all looking at how we want to get these students' opinions heard, but also the best way to go about it. On the flip side, we're also trying to do a lot of more things in the high school. We do a lot of things starting now, which is good. The students definitely feel they have a better audience now. They know we're here to listen, so, which is good. So we're really trying to push that wave and get a lot more feedback from the students and hopefully come back to you guys with more information soon.
Sorry, I'm just recovering from a cold, so I always click on. But yeah, we had a very successful meeting with the representatives from grades nine to twelve. And I think, from what I gathered from most of the students there, there was kind of concerns with foreign language, what we had to offer. And I think it's great and all, and most of the students are totally on board with the turf field we have and that we're going to get and what's being implemented. But we also only have one foreign language. I know that we are taking strides to come up with a second one. I just think in general, as a school, we may need to start thinking more globally, which kind of sounds expensive also. But we are, I think Beacon's really, we're getting there, and we're making a lot of improvements. So just the thought and check of our heads, you know? Let's start thinking globally a little bit.
Are they saying what other languages they would like to offer?
There was, because we did talk about French, but it was brought up that, like, students weren't interested in it, kind of. And that was one of the reasons why it was dropped. I don't know actually the full details behind it. But yeah, there was talks about French, like Italian. I believe from some of my friends that, like, Ketchum offers Italian, like, stuff like that. And I'm not sure about, like, all the details, but it's possibly that these languages and, like, finding teachers, like, that it can happen. So yeah, just second language.
Great. Thank you, guys. And the information you bring back to the board is highly valuable. We do welcome the student voice, and you guys are sharing that with us. Having this information about the AP courses and the languages is valuable information. And to hear from the students, that's much more powerful. So I know you guys sit here and you have only a little bit of time for board comments, and we just want to hear your voices, and we do appreciate the information you guys bring back. I mean, I know that you guys are doing a lot behind the scenes when you're in the school day and taking a lot of time. You guys are involved in almost every committee that we have here, as evident by tonight, you going up. And you guys are just as much as part of this board, and so you guys should be thanked as well. So, good job.
Craig?
I agree with that very much, and I particularly take note of the lack of business electives and the high interest in business majors in college. And I hope that we launch a discussion on that that will lead to some electives in the near term. It shouldn't be too impossible. I wanted to say that it looks like we may have some difficulty with the Public Relations Advocacy Legislative Committee scheduled for Wednesday, because Meredith cannot come. And it looks like Anthony White will probably not be able to make it in time, which would leave us with just two, which isn't really a forum. So I'm going to reach out to the members and see if we can move that to another day when we can get more of us there. If that's okay?
I should know more information, Craig?
Yep.
By tomorrow evening?
Okay.
I just have to, I'm waiting for something that's in flux, so.
Well, give me a toot, and we'll take it from there.
Okay.
On the subject that, when we did meet and had our, kind of our organizational meeting, and we're hoping to dig into the website in greater detail and to meet with Mr. Keely and get a better sense of what the options might be there and how we might proceed. We had to follow up on something that we initiated back in the school board election day, the famous storm, the macroburst that kept a lot of people away from the polls. As you may recall, we discussed a legislative initiative to advocate for some kind of authority in the state to make emergency provisions when an emergency actually happens. Our council said there doesn't appear to be provision for that in state law. We kind of missed the deadline by a day or two on the New York State School Boards Association system, which we weren't very familiar with, but Anthony was enough to check into it and found out we just slightly missed that train, although we did take a running leap at it. But then the other plan B is talk to our local legislators. Of course, now, at this point, we are on the eve of the election, so we're not sure exactly who they will be. So that's sort of in a holding pattern until we see some clarity as to who's who. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, so the next Wellness Committee meeting is on November the seventh. It was moved from October twenty-fourth. There was an unanticipated district conflict. We're moving it to the first Wednesday of every month to avoid conflicts with other meetings that are going on. And Cecilia will be sending to committee members and to school administrators a survey by the end of the week to identify planned and anticipated activities that'll be happening this year around our wellness themes. So that will help inform our upcoming meeting on November seventh meeting. And yeah, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. James?
We have a policy meeting, a policy committee meeting this Wednesday at eight fifteen. I don't want to overcomplicate it, but if we aren't going to be having any earlier meetings that is canceled, maybe we could move the policy meeting earlier, if that's?
I'd be in the same boat as I am for the Public Relations, but that's fine. It's fine with me if you do that.
Is that interesting, or?
I will be, maybe I'll become medicine in Jersey.
Okay, we'll keep it eight fifteen. We, I met with Matt, Cecilia, and Marie, and Eric earlier this week. We came up with a plan for bringing the policies, sort of a plan of attack for bringing all of our policies up to date. I feel like it's a really great pace. It's just aggressive enough to get it done in a timely manner, but it's not so much that we'll be overwhelmed. So I'm feeling really good about that. On that note, so we have a few policies that we'll be looking at this week. They, I'm looking at the next. We're just going through the list. We're looking at special education policies, we're looking at musical instrument and rental policies, and we'll be revisiting our discussion about homeschool extracurricular with some of our additional information that we've collected to add to that conversation. And that's all.
I don't have many comments, except to, I want to thank the student board members, because that information is so valuable, and we don't hear, I mean, I don't hear about that kind of information very often. I have a sophomore in high school, but he's not as talkative as you guys are. So I just want to thank you, and please keep bringing us that kind of information, because I find that to be very, some of the most valuable info that we get here. So thank you.
Sure. First, I wanted to thank all those who were giving us appreciation for being board members. And years ago, when I was sitting out there saying, my gosh, those people really put a lot of time and effort into it. I can't imagine the same absolutely. But here, I'm on this side, and it's actually extremely rewarding. And I enjoy, you know, working with the whole team here for a common, you know, improvement of the district, and we're seeing results. So it is really rewarding, so I appreciate that recognition. It was good to hear from Noah about some of the feedback from the students. And I think that's part of that, somewhat the coherence committee is doing, kind of. I know they're looking at different teachings and all that, but possibly, I'm wondering if there's maybe some questions that the coherence committee may want to know from students, and maybe can add into their survey, you know, to help inform.
We're gonna ask, yeah, we'll ask the students to participate in that, as well as everybody else.
Okay, good, good. And I know that the number of AP classes here don't, you know, may not be the same as others, but having been through the process with a number of kids. The other, the caveat with schools are, as, you know, if you are taking all the courses you can at your school, that's very important as well, because not all, you know, not all schools are the same. So it's very important to try to take as many, all the opportunities you can, that you have now. That's very important. Let's see here. So I visited over the weekend. The girls' swimming team had their divisional meet here. And so I went in to go watch and brought the feedback a couple of years ago. But it was great to see the facility in full usage with eleven teams and a lot of kids and parents. And the girls worked, had a great season, and they're looking forward to, Coach Collins is looking forward to a new scoreboard next year. So that'll be, it seemed to be working okay, but I think they had prepped it to keep it working. So it was really great to see. For the Facilities and Operations Committee, we met on the tenth. And the big picture items, if I can see, is that the, we are looking forward to our state review of our documents to be completed in November, and we are putting our bid documents together, and they should be sent out to bidders in December. We are looking to hopefully do bid reviews in January. And also in January, we'll be planning a presentation to the full board about, you know, the state and the bids that we've received and where we are. So that'll be a presentation in January. We hope to award bids in February, and then we start construction in the summer. The estimates have been coming up back higher just due to the economy and other, you know, indices and everything. So we've been going through and revising, you know, scopes and materials, and they call it value engineering. And we think we've come up with where we're going to get the work done within the current budget. So we'll continue to go over that in our next Facilities meeting. We're also working on development of our security plan, you know, modifications, recommended modifications for our security plan, so that we can look to see when and how we would be implementing those. Let's see here. And what else did I want to say? But our next meeting is November seventh at seven PM. So I think that's it. End of report.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for all the appreciation for being on the board. Kind of, kind of a lost response, but I do, I do appreciate the appreciation, if that makes any sense. Kelly, if I can, the November eighth diversity meeting, if you could add that to the calendar? It's not on the online calendar yet, and I appreciate that. It's at eight fifty. On Thursday, November sixth, right, is it Thursday?
We used to November eighth.
It's, yeah, that Thursday, eighth, yeah, it is, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. And then tomorrow, from one to three, I try, which is not something that I can make, but Education Week's having a webinar on STEM stuff, so I circulated it to the board. I'm encouraging the board to see if they can call in. Unfortunately, I can't make it.
You can also sign up to watch it afterwards.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm gonna try to do. And then the Lower Hudson Superintendent's Commission, anyone who is having some dinner that I circulated around as well. So as I find things, I will send them out to the board for their information. Also, Tina McKinney, who's, who did, who helped the family partnership, the family partnership, I think it was, with the, with the summer work for the high schoolers. She's been trying to bring vocational training to the district on her own power. So I know she's been talking to Cecilia, to Matt, and she keeps looking me into. So I just, I'm hoping at some point that we can, you know, we can find some sort of a good relationship and bring vocational training to the schools as well. And I just want to add to Noah and to, that I took business law in high school many decades ago. And I, you know, even to this day, I still remember some of the lessons I learned, even though I became an engineer. So it's good foundation. Thank you.
Listen?
Just one, just sort of update or follow up. I attended a conference this weekend called Draw Down Learn with two teachers from the Beacon City School District, Jeanette Lynch and Lori Maline, right? And it was really exciting. It was at Omega, I don't know if I said that, but it's based on the work of a book that's called Draw Down the Most Comprehensive Plan That We Have to Reverse Global Warming, and which is two hundred scientists mapped and modeled the most effective ways to draw down greenhouse emissions. And they did the, you know, math, and they calculated that what humanity can do to achieve this with the tools already in use around the globe. And so that book has been a New York Times bestseller for the past year, and a lot of schools have integrated it into learning opportunities. And this event was, partners were Putnam Northern, Westchester, Posey's, the Center for Environmental Education, the Northwest Earth Institute, the Cloud Institute for Sustainability, and the Omega Center for Sustainable Living. And the goal was to, they invited educators, curriculum developers, parents, students, librarians, community groups, researchers, local officials, and interested parties. And we learned about what schools were doing, and then the goal is to collaborate and develop more tools and training and curriculum into integration, because there's lots. It's basically project-based learning for reversing global warming. And it was really, really exciting. And Jeanette and Lori and I are gonna meet this week and try to unpack everything we were exposed to, because it was kind of overwhelming. I've never been to a conference that went so fast. It was like, we looked up, and it was five o'clock. And probably the most inspiring things were from students. These kids who got this book, their teacher put it in their hands, they came up with plans, and the spectrum of students from, you know, schools that were very, you know, well-funded to schools that were, you know, working on a shoestring, and they've done incredible work. So I really look forward to bringing what we learned back to Beacon, and I think maybe a monster was created, maybe some of the three of us there. But there are things like, you know, number six on the list of one hundred, and they're listed in order of impact, is educating girls on climate. And then, you know, there's food waste was a big one. It was really exciting to hear from Lori Maline, because she had gone to the Farm to School Initiative this past summer in Vermont with Karen Pagano, that we received a, we received a grant to us, yes. And so she was, oh, we're already talking about food waste and how we can mitigate it here in Beacon. So there's a lot of things I think we're already doing. We need to pull some together. But one of the schools that presented, they are doing something called a no idling rule around their school, and they got a local, the students got a local law passed, and they built a prototype for a air quality monitor that they put in the parking lot, and it gathers the data to show what happens when there's idling, when there's not. And they're feeding it into like a model and entering it into a science competition. And the kid who designed that prototype is going to be a carpenter. Like, he was, you know, I think everyone expected him to be like, and I'm going to Stanford. And he was like, I'm working for my dad, I'm gonna be a carpenter, and hopefully I'll be able to pay for, you know, pursue my education further. But it was really inspiring, and so, thank you.
Noah and Anthony, thank you for the feedback from students. I am a member of the Curriculum Committee, you have been heard. And one of the big conversations we keep having is that, are we hearing all the right voices to try to, you know, create a bigger picture, and the student voice is top of that list? So that's great to hear. Thank you.
So that's great to hear, thank you. We did have a Curriculum Committee meeting last week and talked about, sort of an update of how we're doing with integrating the new science requirements at the elementary level. And the exciting conversation there was how we're working, how teachers are working with the library media teachers to work together to make that curriculum come to life. The example that was given was a fifth grade teacher was talking about how she was teaching about the oceans and to sort of, to further illustrate that, they created a water filtration system and it just, it sounded like they were really taking the material as far as they could and it was exciting, really exciting to hear about. At the middle school, we were, we got a report about how Fanta Semperal is working out and how we're, you know, we're getting these assessments and we're starting to build some data so that we can start to figure out, look for patterns and figure out responses to those patterns. And the one-to-one initiative, as we've talked about, is happening. And then at the high school, and I think it's also at the middle school, they are looking into this River of Words program, which is a program sponsored, Eric, who's the sponsor?
Beacon Institute.
Beacon Institute, working with teaching artists to add science into all different subjects. And they're working with some really interesting teaching artists. One of them, I happen to know, is a poet, Gold, who I think is from Kinsin, is a really amazing person. So it's exciting to hear that she might be working with our students. She brings, brings a lot to it. And the, we did not look at any curriculum proposals. We're, we, again, we're really talking about, you know, who needs to be in the room, can we, can we talk to all the different levels of leadership to try to create a picture ourselves so that when we get a proposal, we understand how it fits into the goals we've made. So that was great, thank you. And Anthony mentioned there, this, the speaker that Anthony mentioned is John Marrow, who is speaking in Tarrytown on November 5th. It's actually, I realize, I was very excited to go see him, but it is the same night as a board meeting. I'm reading the book right now, it's a good book if anybody's interested. I probably will not attend the dinner. What? And then the other, the last thing is that Kelly Lappin has invited any other board members that are going to be attending the convention to join her for dinner Friday night, which will be with other board members from around Dutchess County. I can't attend that night, but if anybody else wants to, let me know or just email Kelly directly. She did need to know in advance. And that's it.
Meredith, I have a question for you. With the budgeting process starting up soon, has the Curriculum Committee been looking at what, you know, new recommendations and things you're looking at in order to try to make recommendations and feed it into that process? If we can get it into the budget, if that's where we want to go?
That's what we're really trying to, you know, we, last year we accepted proposals, but it was, it was sort of lacking that big picture and so we're hoping that Elisa Soto can come in to our next meeting and talk to somebody, Brian Seltesh and the various leaders, curriculum leaders, so that we can start to think about it in that way.
Right, soon, because do we have a calendar yet, Emory, about when you're going to start talking to the different departments?
Not yet.
But it's going to happen soon, right?
It'll be in January.
Yeah, so we have, we have a couple of meetings, but, you know, you're right, we have, there's a lot, there's, and I think we need to, we need to think about our process, you know, so that we can have those conversations each year earlier so that when we get into that season, we've got those ideas happening. So that's a good point.
All right, good, good, thanks.
Meredith, has the curriculum talked about any CTE courses yet?
In the curriculum?
Yeah.
No, maybe not.
All right. I know there are some good business courses in CTE.
Okay. Eric, any hearings?
Good. All right, so I just want to update the board. I went to a conference on October 17th in Albany. It was through the Mental Health Association of New York, Hines, and at the conference there was the Commissioner of the Department of Health as well as Commissioner Elliott from the New York State Ed Department. And they were talking about the mental health curriculum, emotional intelligences and partnerships with county services. It was very powerful. They had, their keynote speaker was, I believe, Mark Rockett from Yale, who is a professor that, he really specializes in social-emotional learning and emotional intelligence pieces. I believe that there is going to be follow-up and there was a lot of resources presented at the conference about the mental health curriculum that the state has mandated from July 2018. So it was, it was nice to see that the two, Department of Health and the New York State Education Department were working together to become supportive and making a joint effort to support the mental health curriculum and really focusing on the social-emotional needs of students. This week, we have the NISBA Convention in New York City. So I believe we have one, two, three, four people that are new this year that haven't attended a NISBA Convention in the past. So the actual kickoff is at 4:30 on Thursday, that's where they have their introduction reception. There are workshops that are prior to that if you get down there early. What I would like to propose as a board, that we could do a board dinner on Thursday night, if you guys are interested, I could set that up and we could get a restaurant and have a board dinner on Thursday night. We could partner out to see if any other boards want to do that. Meredith did mention that the Dutchess County School Boards Association does host a dinner on Friday that you're welcome to attend if you want. You can filter the communication through me or Meredith and we could share that information with Kelly. So they have a head count for, for that dinner. They also are setting up a hospitality suite at the, at the hotel and they just didn't have the room yet, but they did provide their cell numbers if you want to be able to contact them. It's a great way to go to hospitality suite and network with other Dutchess County School Boards and you have some downtime. The keynote speaker for this year's opening remarks is John, I'm going to butcher his last name, he's from Canones or from What Would You Do?, the TV show, What Would You Do? So it kind of filters around that social-emotional aspects of education and it will be interesting to see. I see him more of an entertainment figure, but I'm interested to hear how he's going to relate it to school settings.
I'm worried for, I'm going to be drawn into a lab rat.
Just look out for the cameras and just know, what would you do? There's a quirky situation presenting yourself in front of you. It might be a test as to what would you do? So just be mindful of that. Does anybody have any questions about the convention that I didn't cover? Anybody interested in the dinner on Thursday night?
Definitely.
Yeah, sure.
I wasn't sure, but, I mean, I'll be in New Jersey Thursday, but I'm in Manhattan on Friday for work. I mean, I can be you guys after that if you want.
I think we're on Thursday night.
All right, never mind that. Okay.
All righty, that's all I have. Oh, and there is an app that if you didn't download, feel free to download, it's definitely handy. All right. Consent Agenda. The use of Consent Agenda permits supportive education to make more effective use of time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the Consent Agenda may so indicate and that item would be considered to be voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there anything on the Consent Agenda that a board member would like to pull?
12.06. A specific item? Any others? Hearing none, a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, minus 12.06. Meredith?
Second.
Mike, comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, nine zero. I need a motion to approve Agenda item 12.06.
Motion to approve Agenda item 12.06, approve claim auditors' reports.
Second. Anthony, comments or questions?
There's a note on the bottom of the first page which talks about check number 29760. It refers to purchase order 180039. My question is really, is, I'm just questioning if the P O number is correct, it doesn't seem to match the, what's up in the, what's in the list above. Might be a transposition of the zero and the three, just unless... Yeah.
So I think the, my understanding of the comment at the bottom was he was auditing the check number, that P O number which was attached with an invoice was not included. So the accounts payable comment, Cook's comment was that it would be added to the next payment, so you may not see the P O at the top.
I'm just wondering, because the P O at the top, the related P O for that check number is 180309, but the P O referenced down below is 180039. So I'm just wondering, was it a transposition error?
It could be, but I know that when we make payment spender, because they're from different departments, so...